David's outside.
You know what?
David is outside.
Let's take a moment and bow our heads and reflect on life. Thank you very much. Let's call the meeting officially to order. Is there anyone here that hasn't been here before? To my left rear of the room is a copy of the agenda and so forth, and maybe some other supporting information about what's going to take place tonight. If you cannot hear, if you will raise your hand. We will speak better into the microphones and make sure that you are able to hear. And we will proceed at this point in time, making sure that all of you are welcome. Glad you're here. Analysts, and pledge allegiance to our flag to my right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The fourth item on our agenda is a consideration of approving the agenda as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I have a proposed change. I make a motion to add Agenda Item 14A or 15, however way the Madam Clerk would like to change it, to discussion of possible action to adopt Resolution 1802, withdrawal of all applications for terminal groin. It was a supplement to the agenda that was sent out, that the clerk sent out, and it's also in the back of the room, and it's also in front of everybody on the board.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I have two items under 18, A and B, that I would like to delete.
Okay, we gotta deal with this one first.
You gotta do mine first.
Can you not hear, sir? If you would, speak into the microphones, please, so the audience can hear.
Okay. I'm making a motion to add an agenda item, discussion of possible action to adopt Resolution 18-02, withdrawal of all applications for terminal groin.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? All right. Well, go ahead, since we have multiples, we'll do them one at a time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. All right, we'll add that. And you had something?
Yes, sir. On item 18, internal control assessment, I would like to delete items A and C and consider only item B. Item A and C would be for future consideration.
And which number on?
Number 18.
18A.
Letters A and B, and A and C would be deleted.
A and C, keep B.
A and C, B stays.
That's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Anyone else have any thing you want to do to the agenda? Is there a motion we approve the amended agenda?
The amended agenda?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. The amended agenda is approved, and at this point, we will go to number six, Ms. Ferguson. Did I skip something? Cut the comments. Oh, I got a big old long list now. I had my mind on Ms. Ferguson's new hair, though. She looked so pretty. Dolly Mitchell, you going to speak to item number 12?
My name is Dolly Mitchell. I live at 132 Torpont Drive. I'm a current member of the Parks and Recreation Shoreline Protection Board. We have had commissioners sit in periodically at our monthly meetings. Since I have been a member of this board, we've never been asked by the commissioners to perform any service for them, including doing research for Beach Vitex. We are kept abreast of issues about beach renourishment and shoreline issues by the town team and are asked for input, or we can give input as needed. As I read this agenda item, it appears that this item writes out input from the expertise of the town staff. We've had our property for 40 years. During that time, we've observed, over the past eight to 10 years, noticeable improvement in shoreline protection efforts, such as our engineered beach, planting sea oats and beach grass, sand fences, and beach renourishment with sand placement. I attribute that knowledge, I attribute that to the knowledge and efforts of our town staff, and particularly the town manager. If you persist in this proposed committee change in Section 2502C, line one should read, "Proposed dredging project four." Note, I interject the word "for," "beach" and "are doomed," and then complete the sentence. Let there be no confusion in this identified dredging and canal dredging where there is already a canal dredging working team that's presently in place. In line two of this section, protective structure projects should not include canal bunkheads. In 3503, appointment in terms, I'm concerned about the wording appointed by the commissioners. Does this mean an open application for residents to apply for service on this proposed committee? With one exception, the Town Audit Committee, the town committees are advertised for openings. Applications are made, credentials given at a public, open meeting, and then voting occurs to select the best of the candidates. Or is this a literal term, meaning members will be simply chosen without an open, public process? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Varum, if you will come to the podium to my right, speak into the microphone, please, sir.
My name is O'Neil Varum. I was born and raised in Rockville County, and around the rivers. And I want to know, is this for groins, or are we talking about jetties?
Groin.
Groin. Groins. And y'all withdrawing your application for the 700 feet, I understand.
They haven't voted on it yet.
But if you want to see what groin, well, groins and jetties are about the same thing. If you want to see what jetties and groins will do, go look at Sunset Beach. Since they put the jetties there, all of Sunset Beach has built up over 900 feet, the whole length of the beach. Used to have oceanfront property. Now it takes them 30 minutes to walk to the ocean. And that's exactly what would happen to Holden Beach if you jettied it or put groins out there. It would catch the sand. I dredge boat it for 25 years. I know what I'm talking about. Even if it's a groin, it'll catch the sand, and the sand will help the whole beach. As it is now, in another 50 years, in my last 50 years, we used to drive down to the east end of the beach, and having you know this, and it would take you 15 minutes to walk to the ocean. Well, now, all of that's gone. You know where it's at? Gone is Spring Branch. It's killing the oysters. You can't even get in there now. So we need, this is something that's really serious. We need to talk about it. Need to get the Corps of Engineers, even if they had to call Trump up, he would probably give you the money to do it with. If you can't get the money, Vern back there, he's got it. So anyway, I've said about three minutes worth, and you really need to think about this, lady.
Thank you, Mr. Varum. Mr. Majors?
My name is Vern Majors. I'm a property owner here and a business owner. I own the Citco Station up on 130. We sell none, nothing, all gasoline, by the way, when we have boats. I want to press upon the commissioners in the crowd here how important this inlet is to this community. First of all, we used to have a lot of trawlers that would come in here and bring shrimp and fish. And we had numerous fish houses from Varnum Town on the way up to inlet. And those people are gone. They're out of jobs. They're gone. The boats can't get in the inlet, so they stop at South Porter to go other places. So we've lost a number of jobs because of the impassability of the inlet. The groin, I agree with O'Neil, that the groin, it would help. I agree also, Mr. Frier, that we need a jetty on the other side so that we have a passable inlet that will maintain itself over the years. And I know the initial cost is high. It always are, but it's worth it, and it'll save money in the long run. I don't know if my checkbook's deepened up. If I borrow from O'Neil's, maybe we can do it together if y'all can't come up with the money. But I want to impress upon you, though, that it's costing jobs to have that inlet closed. And that dredge job we just did was pretty ineffective. They dredged it to six feet. We had a storm two days later, and we checked it, and it was five feet. And in this past storm, we just had this past week, I think, I looked at the surf out there night before last, and the breakers are even all the way across the inlet. I don't think there is an inlet. I had nobody that's been up there to check it. But what we, that half million dollars that was spent was ineffective. And as far as I know, there's no plan to redredge. And I'm not sure, I mean, the point is, redredging it is needed because it's the only solution we got at this point. But the solution we need is a set of jetties out there and protect our community and our properties and our way of life. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gomez?
Good evening. My name is Olivia, and I am a current member of the Parks and Rec Board. I would like to express some thoughts about the agenda items number 12, items A and B. The First Amendment's being made to the ordinance 18-03, Section 34.01, specifically the amendment made to the Parks and Rec Board being reduced to the number of board members from seven to five. Even though in the power and the duties do not require the board members to volunteer at events, this particular board are all committed and participate in the events. There are several events hosted by the Parks and Rec Board, eight of them to me which I consider major events. Just last week, we had our Easter egg hunt, which we had over 400 participants just in this room, and without the help of our board members, this place would not have been cleaned up, and the event would not have run effortlessly. For the Christmas tree event and the tree lighting event, we had over 250 participants. For our turkey trot, 150. Our Halloween event, we had 350 participants. And once we get into the summer months, these are from, these are numbers from 2017, the Parks and Rec Board hosts tie dyeing events every Tuesday for seven weeks during the summer, and we had 2,631 participants last year. And that does not include the concerts that we do put on on Sundays. Once again, being on the board does not require any of the board members to volunteer at events, but as a board in general, we, all seven of us, and their spouses, are all invested in the Parks and Rec Board, invested in the programs that we host, and invested in this community. By reducing the number of members, the Board of Commissioners is decreasing the amount of support and help that the members provide. These events are performed seamlessly with the help of the volunteers of the board members and under the leadership of town employees. The second item I would like to express my thoughts on is the creation or the establishment of the Inlet Protection Board. I am a member of the Shoreline Subcommittee, and during this time, we have ridden the beach. We've participated in the coastal cleanup. We've actually visited the greenhouse to observe and learn the types of sand dunes that we use here at Holden Beach. Under the direction of the Town of Holden Beach, we've been given assignments and tasks for additional beach accesses here at Holden. We have never received any kind of request or recommendations from the board directly to us. And looking over the powers and duties proposed in the new ordinance, these are items that, as a Subcommittee, we are able to look at and suggest and do recommendations for the board.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. Ms. Willis?
My name is Becky Willis, and I live at 140 Carolina Avenue. I'm also addressing item number 12. The other day, I was thinking, talking with a friend of mine, and she said she'll never forget the day she crossed the bridge and realized that she wanted to live on Holden Beach. Pondering her statement, I started to remember. I remember coming to Holden Beach nearly 47 years ago and waiting at the light to come across the one-lane bridge onto the island. I remember it always being red when I was coming and green when I was going, and I wanted it to be the other way around. I remember when there were no mega houses, and when most of the houses on the beach were smaller than the ones that we live in as permanent residents. I remember no air conditioning and the vinyl sticking to my legs when I got up out of the chair, the vinyl cushions sticking to my legs. I remember no washing machine and a trunk full of dirty clothes and wet towels when I left. I remember brushing my teeth with Diet Coke because the water smelled so strongly of sulfur. I remember never wanting to leave and coming to Holden Beach every chance I got. I dare say, over the past 47 years, I've walked every mile of this beach. I've watched the sand shift and renourishment keep our beach beautiful for everyone to enjoy. I will further say that the people serving on the Parks and Recreation Board have as much experience with the beach and knowledge of Holden Beach as any residents on the island. Because our island is small, there are a limited number of people who are willing or able to serve on the boards that are necessary for our town to operate. However, if there are people who have a greater skill set than the ones existing on the board, would it not be wiser to replace members of the existing board with those people as current board members' terms expire? Creating another board will make staffing the board a chore, and will also create more work for an already overworked Town of Holden Beach staff who will have to prepare for and attend another meeting, preside over the meeting, and prepare minutes of the meeting. I've always believed, if it isn't broken, don't fix it. If it is broken, try to figure out how to fix it before you toss it aside and get a new one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. Ms. Fleischauer?
Karen Fleischauer, 125 Lyons Paw. I'm currently the chairperson of the Parks and Rec Advisory Board. I'd like to make three points. The Inlet and Beach Protection Board has been on the agenda, has been an agenda item at these commissioners' meetings since January. You've had ample opportunity to task our committee to do research and make recommendations regarding the inlet and beach issues. The creation of a new board increases the workload of town staff. I believe it's redundant, unnecessary, and irresponsible. The present members of the Parks and Recreation Board cumulatively have over 100 years of property ownership. We know the beach, we love the beach, and we won't find a group of individuals more willing or capable of overseeing the health of the beach and inlets. The beach is our recreation, and you cannot separate the two. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. McIntyre, Kite Man, there he is.
John McIntyre, 246 Brownswood, Cavendish West. I guess we're pretty well showing that the people in the existing Parks and Rec Board come to Board of Commissioners' meetings. I too am on the board. What I'd like to ask the Board to do tonight during the discussion of item 12 is to really enlighten us on why you see the need to establish a new board to address beach protection concerns. I'm a member of Parks and Rec Board. Our responsibilities overlap significantly with this new proposed board currently in that they say we should advise on beach vegetation fencing, other methods of protecting the beach and property. While I'm not against changes in structure or membership that would better serve the community, several of us on the Parks and Rec Board have asked repeatedly for some explanation as to why the proposed board's necessary when a simple change in Parks and Rec's charter would seem to suffice. To my knowledge, none of the members of Parks and Rec were consulted regarding existing or proposed structure or function. During a recent Parks and Rec meeting where Commissioners Frier and Sullivan were present, I asked if they could explain their thinking and give us some input regarding setting up this new entity that appears to be so redundant. Both of the commissioners were invited to come and as public attendees, but both declined, and our questions remain unanswered. I certainly understand that committee responsibilities and membership are fluid and frequently changed to best meet the needs of the town management. But I really would encourage you and ask you to please, during the discussion tonight, provide us with some rationale, and let us know what your thinking was in terms of what went into these changes, because we think there may be better ways to do it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, does that conclude the list I'm supposed to?
I believe so.
Thank you all for your comments. We're on number six on the agenda list. Ms. Ferguson, it's now your turn. I apologize for getting out of order.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Last spring, Jack Bolt, who is to my right here, approached the town about Eagle Scout project that may be helpful for the town. And we discussed some options. He also was involved with the scout group across the street that did our planting for mitigation after we put in our transient dock. And we discussed some options, but we decided on the handicap access at Quentin Street to better serve the participants who need to use the shower at that access. After that time, in the summer, Jack was involved in a serious automobile accident which caused him to be unable to complete that project during rehab. But as soon as he was back on his feet and in town, he was contacting me on when he could get started, and that project has been complete. So the town would like to honor him with recognition for completing that project, and he will now, I guess, earn his Eagle Scout badge. And if I could get the mayor and the commissioners and the town manager to come down front here, we'd like to get a picture so that he can turn that in with his report, if you guys will indulge us with that. Thank you, sir, for your time.
How many ex-boy scouts do we have in the room? Hey. Good group of people. I knew that was coming. I knew that was coming. Would all of you girl scouts, current or ex, please stand for standing ovation? All right.
I thought you were gonna ask for cookies.
Yeah, that's what I did, I got any cookies. All right, are we on number seven? Shane, where, there Shane, over there.
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mayor and Board for having me down. Tonight's always nice to come down to Holden Beach, nice Tuesday evening. We were contracted to prepare plans and specifications for doing rove work, paving improvements to Marlin and Boyd Street pursuant to the streets evaluation report that was done several years ago, and follow up with Chris and Dave to make sure we were on track with what we were supposed to do. We prepared those documents and solicited bids informally from, I believe we solicited four paving contractors back at the end of March. We received bids April 10th. Only had one bid this year. I think there's a lot of contractors that are just busy out there. There's a lot of work going on, and I think we're probably fortunate to get one. And Highland Paving was the single responsible bidder that provided a number to the town. Their bid total was $92,050 for the paving of Boyd and Marlin Street. Our preliminary engineering estimate was a shade over that. It was about $94,000, I think. So I feel like their number is reasonable, and it was in line with what we did last year. And they've done several projects that we've been involved with over the years, so I feel confident that they'll do a good job. So I believe, you know, we would have sent an email to Mr. Hewitt recommending that the Board award this contract, the Highland, and, you know, I would support that in person as well.
So there were a total of four?
We solicited four, yes.
We solicited four.
Only received one number.
The only reason why I was asked the question, I got a phone call from someone on the island, and they apparently misinterpreted the information, but there were four, and one only submitted.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Is there a motion to be made?
Motion to accept.
First, could I ask, is it the town manager's recommendation?
Yes, this is in keeping with our 10-year capital plan on streets resurfacing.
You make the motion already?
Yeah.
I second.
Have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing now, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
And the intent is to have this done before Memorial Day, right?
Chief Wally Lane's gonna give us the police report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Happy Tax Day. Or not. I get to be brief tonight also, because I'm thinking, beyond that, it might not be so. Believe it or not, we made it all the way through the winter with no break-ins. Right? First time I can remember that in a really long time. Last five days, we've Last five days, we've had five break-ins. And simultaneously, Ocean Isle has had five break-ins. Five break-ins, five TVs from both islands. We're working very closely together and believe we have a suspect developed who will not be breaking in much longer. And that's the good news. We're finishing up our in-service for this year. The goal was to try to get it done before the season started, and we're wrapping it up. Paperwork for the new hire is in the works, and we're at the mercy of the state as to when we will actually get to bring him on board. It's typically never less than thirty days from the time the paperwork is submitted. So I'm cautiously optimistic that before the season actually starts, we'll have him on board and have him ready to go. And that being said, be glad to answer any questions. Hearing none.
I have a comment I wish you'd address.
Yes, sir.
I understand Frank Dilworth's father passed away.
Yes, he did. He passed away last Monday. The funeral was this past Friday.
So if you see Frank while he's on the job, give him a word of warmth and appreciation for what he does.
The other thing I'd say about that is this, and I didn't even know it until I saw the obituary. Frank's dad had been a police officer in Pennsylvania for twenty-five years. Actually retired in Pennsylvania and then moved here. So I guess on some level, it's in the blood. I would say one other thing that just popped in my head. Easter Sunday. Hope everybody had a really good Easter Sunday. Mine started out pretty good. I was in church. I got a call at about, I guess, around nine o'clock, and the call was that there was a suspicious package on the basketball court right across from Town Hall. And apparently, at some point, someone had left a briefcase sitting under the basketball goal on the far end of the basketball court. It was just sitting there. And there was a baseball cap about ten feet to the right of it that had Cuban baseball symbols on it, which all that was fairly curious. Then we found out from Public Works that when they did the trash run that morning, they had actually seen the briefcase on the basketball court at about seven-thirty that morning. Well, all that being said, and things being the way they are these days, we took no chances. Cleared the basketball court, sealed off Brunswick Avenue on both ends, and requested a bomb dog from the county. About an hour and a half later, the bomb dog got here and sniffed the briefcase, then subsequently knocked the briefcase over. It didn't blow up, so I was feeling better at that point. And it turned out that it was nothing. Briefcase was empty. So, but we didn't know that when it got left there. We still don't know who left it, why they left it. The other interesting thing was, is that we have cameras that cover the park area. Unfortunately, the electrical controls for those cameras are on the outside of the building that houses the cameras. And that switch had been conveniently turned off. So we didn't get to see who left the briefcase. I'm thinking we'll be diligently working to secure that better for future, and hopefully we won't repeat any of those incidents. But interesting Easter Sunday for me.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Clemmons, Public Works.
Now, I guess if I get this to work this time, I would have done better than I did last time. Give you some updates on vacuum sewer system upgrades for pump station number four. It did work. I was saying, it don't work, it's my eyes, but I'm going to try it anyway. Went right straight to financials. Financials, so far, of our budget, one million four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We paid two payments to Leo Green Engineering for plan design, and that's all we spent out of that money to date. Updates since the last meeting, we've had one meeting with Green Engineering. At that time, his plants were not ready for review. Scheduled delivery date for plan, we reviewed to have plans to us was sixteenth of March, and we received those about five days late on the twenty-first. And went out for bids, advertised for bids in Star News on the, I think it's the eighth. Is that correct? I can't see the line. And you can see, we've actually revised our timeline some. I don't think that'll make any delays on what we had for completion date because we've actually kind of crunched up and tightened up the schedule there to make it work for us. There are some pictures of what the actual structure will look like. First one you left says the east. There's east view, what you'd look like if you coming in through the west gate looking from the east. The other one's the west side of it. And that would be the south view, looking right straight on it from the street. I'm sorry, I didn't have any pretty painted up colored pictures, but it's all black and white, but as far as color and appearance of it, I'm going to try to make it look something similar to what we got here at the Town Hall. And I don't need to go into no history, but that shouldn't have been in there.
Chris, I have a quick question. So your financials, so are we on budget then? Is those two invoices within expected budget?
Yes, so far. So those two invoices, one of them about twenty thousand seven hundred, and the other one's forty-five, five forty. Green Engineering's total cost, I think, like a hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars. So, you know, when you take all that away, I think we'll have like a million two fifty-two, somewhere along in there, which is right on line of where we actually budgeted to start with.
Okay.
But that's the only thing that's been spent out over the date.
Okay.
I'm probably getting out of turn here, but actually, I'm on the agenda next, and the next thing is actually discussion of awarding the contract. So I could probably just go ahead and skip to the next item on the agenda and not have to sit down.
Yes, sir. Without objection.
Okay. We've got on here for the thirteenth of May, the awarded contract, but actually, the award of the contract will be up to the Board of Commissioners.
I believe the fourteenth is a Monday.
Yeah. Why you do is to schedule a special meeting on the fourteenth to do that, and it be based off of what we get from responsible bidders and engineers, recommendations along with staff.
Yeah, if I could interject and just speak to calendars for a moment, on item nineteen, the, what we would like to do is to schedule the public hearing for item nineteen on the public hearing for the system development fees and not both of those items out at the same meeting. The, there's a, there's a public notice requirement for the system fee analysis that's got to be on the street for a certain period of time. And if we would, the fourteenth for the contract award and to hold the public hearing on the system fee analysis on that same date is what we're, is what we're trying to pull into focus there.
Just a comment, it's not necessary. We all be there a hundred percent of it. I am unavailable the whole week of the fourteenth. I'm, I'm gone from the ninth until whatever the twenty-first.
And the, the public hearing is, is to, you have to have forty-five days go by, and the public hearing is basically for folks to hear the presentation on the analysis. There wouldn't be any action taken on it at that time.
Is that for the meeting? Because I'm also in Seattle, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen.
And you're gone.
Well, what we're faced with is trying to assemble a quorum to meet the schedule on the award of the contract, which, you know, that's got a, and we're just trying to take advantage of being able to kill two birds with one stone at the same time.
But it seems like we won't have a quorum, right? So could we, as I had suggested earlier, could we schedule it for the eighth? I know, I know that's a tight frame between getting the bid and then being able to award it, but...
That bid's not going to be in until the eighth, I don't think.
I'm sorry, the eleventh, right? That was, the eleventh was the day I suggested, the Friday.
And, you know, I don't know what, you know, what kind of turnaround time on the qualifications of the bids by the engineer, what's that, that's going to take. I know Noel has a, has a preliminary draft of the actual contract, and, but it's probably going to take some time for Leo to actually qualify the most responsive bidder. I'm hesitant to sign Leo up to qualify the bidder on the same day that we get a million-dollar contracts bid in. And I was, in looking at the, you know, the May dates, the May dates, there's not a lot of days in May, you know, going from the calendars that the Commissioners provided. And Mike, you were pretty much dot the whole time, but I wasn't aware of the other, other folks that weren't going to be in there.
After you schedule a budget, things come up and you sort of fill it in.
Okay. That eleventh day would work for me. It's the Friday before. Is that possible that could work?
I'm not sure that that'll work for the other meeting if you're trying to do them both at the same time. I don't think the forty-five days will at least...
That won't work, that, that won't work for the, for the other meeting.
I won't be here the eleventh. I've got graduation at Brunswick Community College, and I'll be handing out diplomas all day.
Nice. Do you have another, an alternate date in mind?
I think that the wisest thing to do is recalibrate the Commissioners' calendars, confer with the clerk, and see what we can bring back to you and do, do a special called meeting. But, but the town awarding of that contract, you know, the five seventeen number, whenever we're able to do that, that's, that's directly related to our calendar on being able to get that lift station up. And on the, as far as item nineteen, on the fee analysis, what we, what we would hope to avoid is having the public hearing and the adoption at the same time that we do the budget ordinance for that fee schedule. So anyway, we'll come back, we'll, we'll recalibrate on, on those two items' dates.
Are we ready to move to the next item, number eleven? Are we still?
I think we're ready.
I'm calibrating with the clerk.
Calibrating with the clerk.
We're good.
Okay to move on?
Yes, sir.
Number eleven, Ms. Pat.
At our, at our December meeting last year, which was the meeting where this Board was sworn in, one of the proposed actions was to discuss and accept the existing rules of procedure for the Board of Commissioners. And I suggested at that time that we defer any discussion and voting on that until after the three new Commissioners had had our governmental training, as I refer to it. After we had that training, we were looking, I was looking at the state suggested rules of procedure for a Board of Commissioners, for a town government, against the document that has been in place since the last Board of Commissioners a couple years ago. And I was trying to do a sort of a rough combination of the two by taking our proposed document and trying to kind of put it into the suggested rules of procedure. What I really need is the suggested rules of procedure and to put in our section, our sections to make it better. But I sort of put together a lot of comments and interjections and placed things to come up with what I thought would be a document that would sort of take the two together and create something that would be complete. Now, it's, it's a lot of back and forth between two documents, and where I've left it is sort of, I think it would be a good idea if a couple of the Commissioners worked together with the suggested rules of procedure and the existing Town of Holden Beach rules of procedure, and basically create a new document that can then go through everybody's review and that we can then come out with a new rules of procedure that we can use as the Board of Commissioners for the rest of our term. So the red line that's in here is a melding of ours and the suggested, and it's a little bit difficult to follow, but I think it can serve as the backbone of two people working together to create a clean document.
And, and I'd be happy to work with, with you, you know, because I was part of the current, and I know that's the, and what you're coming from is the, I'd say it's the template from the school of government. So, yeah, I'd be happy to work with you on that.
You just need two other, not two with you, just you...
Just, just the two of us. And I, I think it's, I think it's appropriate, yeah, to have the executive secretary. It has to be somebody from the old Board working with me, so I'm perfectly happy to try to get that batted out in the next few weeks.
Okay, yeah, we could do that.
Okay.
I have a question. If I read this properly, it, it takes the voting rights away from the mayor for appointments and some other things, is that right?
I, I found that in a document, and that's why I put that in there. What's in here, again, was my attempting to put the two documents together. That doesn't mean that the final document... that the final document is going to be exactly the two documents together. When we go through the whole thing, it will be unagreed of how we put what the rules of procedure that the town of Holden Beach accepted a couple years ago, the Board of Commissioners, goes into, again, the state suggested one and, and try to make that a correct and complete document, which I do propose will go to Noel for her review and her acceptance. So, my comment in here was something that I found, and, and I put it in there because I, I think I stated that in the document I read, you know, this was stated, that doesn't necessarily mean, Mr. Mayor, that that is going to remain like that, okay?
Well, I'm just wondering what the mayor can do other than call the meetings to order if all this stuff passes, but...
I guess, uh, I'll just make my comment on this, since you asked that question. I think that after we went to the training, it's my opinion that we should really adopt the proposed rules and procedures with some minor adjustments that may fit into us rather than trying to meld the two, because it's kind of complicated and I think it's a bit more work than we, than we have to do. For instance, in the current one, to, uh, the chagrin of some of the people here, you don't have to, you don't have to put the agenda out two or three days before the meeting, you just put it out and then it goes out simultaneously to the public. That clearly is not a good idea, and it's clearly not in the proposed rules that are by the School of Government. So I think the School of Government basically covers all the bases, and there may be a few, not more than a handful, of issues that would require us to modify those rules, and that would be the, both the easiest and the best way to proceed with this project, but I, I agree that two people should get together and put that together and then we'll discuss it.
All right. Anything else on this subject? Are we on number twelve?
Yeah, that's, that's mine, uh, I make a motion that we adopt ordinance eighteen oh two and eighteen oh three.
I think we should do one at a time.
There's a motion on the floor to adopt, there's a motion on the floor to adopt both, so that way the motion will be considered as read.
Second.
Now, we've got a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to, um, have some, I'd like to address some of the things that came up during the comments, um, and I, I wrote some notes here, um, there, the intent to reestablish, because my understanding that, uh, there, there was a, um, ordinance for, uh, Inlet and Beach Board at one time that was folded into the, um, Parks and Recreation Board, the intent is to put the added focus back on the beach and inlet, because, uh, and, and because of some other things that have come out, come up later on, where we need to, I, I believe we need to, uh, look forward and concentrate on the, on the beach and inlet, working obviously with the staff, I don't know where that came from, but, um, look, very much look forward to, uh, working whoever is, uh, assigned, and I expect it to be, uh, Christie, um, we would definitely work with, closely with the staff. Another, another point was, um, you know, it's been a while, we've been working on this for a couple months, and, yeah, I don't think that's a bad thing, we, um, we have discussed it, we've, um, you know, several board members had some, you know, hey, you're going, you know, you're codifying too much, uh, let's, uh, let's not, um, get into, um, putting all that in the ordinance, we agreed to that, we've rewritten it several times, and, um, and we've, uh, agreed to the, um, the current, or, I think, I, I'm, I'm under impression that we agreed on, on the, the current, uh, language for both. The other, um, the other, um, thing is, um, um, it's, um... There, there was a confusion, I think, about we're, we're lowering the number of Parks and Rec, um, board members. That is not the case, we aren't changing the number of, uh, board members for Park and Rec, we are only, um, proposing five members for the new, um, beach, inlet and beach protection board, so there's still gonna be the same number of Parks and Rec board members.
Eighteen oh three has, does have in a red line that, that, uh, board members will decline to a maximum of five residents or property... Right, yeah. Yeah.
I guess you're reading from page, you're reading from page thirty-nine?
Yeah, yeah.
Also needs to be pointed out that that could be possibly no residents.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry, um...
Because it clearly states residents or property owners, so the residents can be totally left out, be perfectly in order, and I'm wondering if that's your intent.
The intent was not to lower the, my intent was not to lower the number of Parks and Recs, the intent was not to put a burden of requiring seven on the new, so...
So you can adopt eighteen oh three without the suggested language from staff?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, that's, I, I'm sorry, I, that was not the intent, I don't, I don't know where that came from.
Are, are you speaking to the point of residents?
I think he's speaking to the, through expiration terms, the number of board members will decline to a maximum of five residents or property owners of the town of Holden Beach, um, is my understanding.
Yep.
That is, you do not wish for that language to be a part of the...
Okay, so it'll be residents only?
No, that's a separate issue, the first sentence allows for seven residents or property owners of the town of Holden Beach, that is consistent with the same language that is in the Inlet and Beach Protection Board, which allows both residents and property owners to serve on that board.
Correct.
I'm sorry, I'm thick-headed, but is there any limitation or possibility of it being all residents or all non-residents?
Yes, meaning it could be either or.
Right.
So my point is, so it could be all non-residents?
Yes, or it could be all residents.
That's what it says, okay, just want to make sure everybody in the room understood that. Anything else?
Uh, I'm sorry, yeah, one, one last thing, um, and, and the other thing is, I would greatly encourage, and I, I would hope there'd be, um, some Parks and Rec, current Parks and Rec Advisory Board members that would apply like we normally do, um, for the, um, you know, beach and, um, inlet board, so I don't see, I don't, there's no, I don't think, I think anything's in here as far as we're changing the way the board selects the members of the new board, so we would ask the clerk to, you know, put out, um, and advertise for, uh, you know, um, potential members to, potential, um, members of the board to, uh, put their name in the hat, and then, just like every other board, the Board of Commissioners would select from the applicants. I think that's all I wrote down.
Any more discussion?
I have a question.
Yep.
In way of just requesting clarification, in thirty-five oh two C speaks to the evaluating proposed dredging projects, alarms went off in my head, um, when Dolly mentioned the canals and the bulkheads, is it the intent of this board to include that work for the canal subdivision dredging and bulkheads, um, in this definition? I would...
No.
I would strongly encourage you to specifically exclude the, um, I'm sorry, John, it's about page thirty-six, it's, it's page thirty-six, powers and duties, C, down the paragraph right before the, the end of the page, because it talks about proposed dredging projects, um, and protective structure projects to the town, I, I think that...
Inlet, I think it's inlet dredging.
But, but I want to just make sure that we're unequivocally clear on the demarcation between canal dredging and bulkheads in those subdivisions as opposed to inlet and beach, the focus on that.
Yeah, I, I still don't see your language, it's coming exactly where it is.
I'm, I'm just saying, evaluate, uh, thirty-five oh two A, B, C, evaluate the feasibility and cost and benefits of proposed dredging projects.
Okay, so you want clarification on that that does not apply to the canals? I'm, I'm more than okay with that, because we have a structure to handle canals now, right? I mean, so, I don't think we need to, to, yeah, I'm, I'm...
It's, it's such a niche...
Yep, I agree with that.
A niche there that it, it really needs to be...
And also, and protective structures, excluding canal bulkheads.
Yes, yes.
Totally agree. Yeah, canal dredging too, right, right, okay.
Thirty-five oh two C, line one.
That's what I'm talking, yeah, we got it.
Got it. Yep, that was not the intent to, uh, to do that. Yeah, the, the intent is to focus on, you know, that, now that, hopefully, the vote will, will show that we're, uh, gonna move past the, um, the terminal groin, and we should focus on addressing the, uh, beach and inlet, um, with, with, uh, added focus and, uh, this new board, that's the intent.
For me, the next biggest thing that the boards are gonna face, this board and the next board and the board after, is gonna be storm damage, beach, and it's beach protection, inlet management, how we're gonna deal with that, and I, as a board member, would love to have a committee that's just focused on that, it's that important to me. Uh, the others are really important, and the Parks and Recs have done a great job with Parks and Recs, the island is blessed with some beauty right now, we wouldn't have had without it, but going forward, I see the, the ocean and that beach being the major chore for this board, and I'd just like a, a group of people that are really focused on that, and will work with the board, and it's a board, board advisory committee.
And work with the town staff as well.
Well, the town staff has the, the expertise that the board needs.
Yep.
Any more discussion?
Yes, I think one of the questions that Mr. McIntyre would have liked to have addressed was why the board thinks that the people that are currently doing that are either not able to do it, or why we feel that we have to replace those people with another different board and not ask those people to do what we're, what that motion or that, yes, that, that ordinance will, will do.
So that, we're essentially adding people, because we're adding, we're adding a new board, so we're adding five more people to focus on the beach and inlet, and it's not those people, I would encourage those people, in fact, I strongly encourage those people to apply to the new board, so, so rather than, rather than correct, and I, I know there's a, you know, it can go either way, correct what is a, a glaring deficiency in the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, it doesn't even have anything about the beach and inlet, it only has one little paragraph addressing very, very little associated to the beach, the dunes, so we'd either, you know, you could either address that and change that, or my, my choice would be, let's, let's add some, some, um, additional resources to this issue, because it's gonna be a, an issue that I think we need to focus on heavily, because we've been focusing on it from a different direction up to this point, uh, going forward, I'd like to focus on it directly.
Okay, then, I'll go back to John about the, I think you said, this group will focus only on...
On that.
So, to go back to the discussion we had in the prior meeting, does that mean that the people who are going to be on this board will be prohibited from being on any other board?
Absolutely not, uh, if they want to, if anybody on any board can apply, anybody can apply to this new board.
Well, sure, so, but, but the point is, and let me see if...
And you can be on multiple boards, there's no...
No, there's no prohibition against it, but I guess what I would say is, if you want to have someone who's going to only be focused, because there's going to be a tremendous amount of work involved, and I agree with that, that there's nothing that's gonna come down the road in the near future that's going to be as important as the beach, I totally agree with that, but I'm trying to get my head around the logic here, and if we're going to, to say that only new people can have this focus, that the seven people that are already there can't have this focus because there's too much to do, how will it be possible to place five new people on the board but then also let them lose some of that focus, because maybe they're gonna be on the P and Z board, or maybe they're gonna be on the other board?
Let me, let me address that, it's not the people's focus, it's the board mission focus that I'm addressing, not the people, I think people can, when they come to the board meeting, they can, they can address the Parks and Rec one time, or P and Z one time, when they come to the other, they can address the beach and inlet, I think they're more than capable of doing more than one thing, um, but I, I, I think the mission of this new board will be focused, not the people, I think people are more than, I, like, we're asked to do multiple things, more than capable of addressing multiple, multiple issues.
And I, I agree perfectly, and so I don't see the idea that focus is actually an issue. To me, the issue is, we never asked these people, or the people before me, I'm here four months, since I'm here, we've never asked anybody to, on that board, to do any of the items that we're starting a new board for, I would think that the least we can do is let these people do what you would have the new board do, and if they're not doing it to our liking, then your position will be verified, and my position will be proven wrong, but until they have an opportunity to take this job on, I don't think we should start a new board, give them the opportunity to do what they volunteered to do, and then let us direct them to do certain things, and we'll see if, if your idea is better, or these people who are, who are out here, every single one of them is out here today asking us to let them do this job.
And, and, and every single one of them should apply, you're, you're focusing on the people, you're focusing on the people and not the, not the, um...
I think that's...
Not the mission of the board and...
That is a distinction without a difference, these people...
I disagree.
My, my feeling is that the people want to do the job, they already have the job, we haven't asked them to do it.
Because we've been focused on the terminal groin.
I, I got you, I got you, I understand that.
So now we're gonna switch that focus?
Let's ask them to do it.
And, and I, I, I disagree, so...
Well, clearly, and then, one other thing I would ask, again, being new to the board, I didn't realize this, but when we voted last time to have people put onto a, an advisory board, it was P and Z, we did it, we wrote these things down, it was like a secret ballot, and then it, it just announced that, you know, Joe Blow, Joe Blow has been elected, but then, when you look at the minutes, it says that Mike Sullivan voted for this person and Pete Frey voted for that person and so forth, why don't we just do it out in the open in the first place, why don't we just vote for the people, so when, instead of writing things down, why don't we just vote? So, I, I would demand, in these circumstances, that if we're gonna start a new committee and people are gonna apply for the positions, that those people out there know where we stand when we vote on it, and they don't have to wait to read the, read the minutes of the, of the meeting.
That's a, that's a rules of procedure that we, we'd have to agree upon.
Well, just...
I think we can all agree, and rightly so, you know, you, you folks brought to our attention, you know, in the beginning, about the need, that the critical component here is, is the inlet and is the sand, we are in the sand business, whether we like it or not, we are in the sand, sand business. We, as, we as a community, we as a town, we as commissioners, we've gotta work together, and, uh, right now, right now, I, I'm kinda like in, in between the center of this.
Yes, you are.
But, what I'd like to again say, you know, we are in the business...
But what I'd like to again say, you know, we are in the business of sand. We've gone through the terminal groin, we've listened, we've all listened, and we're going to get, I'm not talking about the terminal groin right now, as much as a lot of time has been put into that. I have, I have major heartburn and major problems with even some of the, some of the ability to obtain funding. And I appreciate the guys, you know, you, you guys were teasing one another about, you know, the expense and possibly paying for the groin or paying for a jetty. I come from New Jersey where we had a lot of jetties, and we had groins. I took a picture of a groin at the Avon Inlet last month, and it was full of sand. But on the south side, there was no sand. And the town, that particular town could use that sand, so, but, to me, when I look at a groin, I look at a groin maybe on the Oak Island side. But, you know, there's, there's so much, there's so much in this whole discussion. And maybe what we need to do is start small rather than large. We need to pick apart this problem. I have a problem with the lack of funding. The state of North Carolina turns around and says, we're going to issue, issue experimental permits. Well, that's fine, that's fine, but whose back is that going to be on? So let's try to get this thing back, back on track if we can, and then we can move to the terminal, terminal groin. But right, right now, we folks, we are in the sand business, we have all got to work together. You know, we, we can't be fighting with one another. This is a critical time in the history of Holden Beach. That things need to be done, we need to do it together, and it's got to be done in the right way. So please, let's not tear each other apart, let's work together.
Any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
Madam Clerk, it's four to one.
That was for the original motion, did you want to amend the motion?
Uh, yes.
That was just to pass it without your changes that you guys talked about.
So there are three changes that I wrote down on 3502C. We are inserting the word excluding canal dredging after proposed dredging projects, all protective structure projects. And in 1803, eliminating the expiration term, the number of board members assigned to maximum progress. We are deleting that language, is that understood?
Correct.
Yes, so I modify my motion to accept those amendments.
Okay, let's, let's get our house in order for just a minute. Oh, we had a motion from Mr. Freer, and we had a second from Mr. Fletcher. Now we've got three changes in the motion, is that correct?
Yeah, I think that those changes were discussed during.
And you, Mr. Freer, you agree to those?
Yes, I do.
And you, Mr. Fletcher, you agree to those? Okay, so we have an amended motion standing to be voted on. Mayor Protem asked me to question, can he make a motion, substitute motion?
No, I'm sorry, just, I could make more comments instead.
Oh, more comments, okay. Sure you can make more comments.
I'm, I'm sorry, I left this out. In 3506, it says that the Board of Commissioners may designate and engage legal counsel for the environmental counsel, or the environmental counsel otherwise engaged to advise the inlet board, protection board is needed. I guess, at, at that point, we, we have a P and Z board, doesn't have any special legal counsel. They consider all, all types of issues that will affect the island and, and have legal ramifications. Why, why do we think this board needs to have its own attorney?
This is the Board of Commissioners can.
Yes.
Us.
Yes. But.
Not the inlet board.
So it's kind of not needed because it says the Board of Commissioners, not the inlet board? No.
I, I guess, I, I guess I would say that after seeing what happened with the last time we engaged counsel, I'm hesitant to even give us the ability to have any more counsel than we already have on, on the payroll. So, that, that, that's just one other comment I have on, on that particular issue.
Well, along those lines, I think it's fair for me to make a comment unless you stop me. The current newly hired attorney, I've seen correspondence where the attorney is soliciting communication from the public, from the Property Owners Association and the commissioners, and just reminding the commissioners that whenever someone calls the attorney, the meter is running. Or at least he has the right to run. And someone correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're now tapping on $30,000 that you guys have spent on this newly hired attorney, and we're not even near the end yet. So if I'm wrong, tell me, but I would encourage you not to allow just anybody to call these $300 an hour people and talk. You got to give some direction to whoever you're giving your pocketbook to, seems to me, but anyway.
I don't know where that number is from, that $30,000 number is from, and Noel, do you have any? Yeah, I don't know where that number is coming from.
I'm not talking about this attorney.
No, I know, I know.
Mr. Hewitt, do you have any idea how much money has been spent or not billed yet totaling what has been spent?
I have no idea what has not been billed from the environmental attorney yet. Looking at the, the trend so far, it seems like it's, it's about 10 grand a month. Now, that may be erroneous on my part to say that it's linear, but it's been about 10 grand a month since we, since we brought him on.
All right, I'll stand corrected until we see the billing. But I would say to you, I won't miss it.
But we've, he's been on board for three months, so.
And that attorney was hired by the board?
But my point is, my point is, and I hope it's taken in the way it's given, whenever your $300 an hour person will talk to anybody, you need to understand whether or not he's billing you for it or not.
Absolutely, understood.
All right, is there any more comment about the motion? Everybody understand the amendments? You ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
All right, it's four to one, Mayor Protem, objection. Okay, are we on number 13?
Uh, yes. I make the motion that the Board of Commissioners permanently revoke Resolution 11-12 entitled Terminal Groin Permit Application.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk, everybody is opposed to the terminal groin. Number 14.
I make the motion that the Board of Commissioners direct Clark Wright, Special Environmental Counsel to the town of Holden Beach to immediately communicate with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers electronically, followed by sending a formal letter via certified mail that decision by the Board of Commissioners to withdraw fully and cease any and all further processing of or actions on the town's currently pending Section 10 and Section 404 permit applications and associated NEPA documentations. Core action ID number SAW-2011-01914.
I second.
Motion is seconded, we're open for discussion. Everybody understand the motion?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? I'm hearing none, so I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Madam Clerk, it's unanimous, number 15, flood map.
Uh, excuse me.
14A. 14A.
14A.
Well, give me some help here.
It was discussion and possible action to adopt Resolution 1802 with the resolution here, withdrawal of all applications.
All right, Mr. Freer, is this yours?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I make the motion that we adopt Resolution 1802, withdrawal of all applications for terminal groin. And I ask that the town clerk read the Resolution 1802.
Resolution 1802, withdrawal of all applications for terminal groin. Whereas on September 13th, 2011, the Board of Commissioners adopted Resolution 11-12, directing the town manager to make applications to the North Carolina Division Coastal Management Coastal Resources Commission for a permit to construct a terminal groin on the east end of Holden Beach adjacent to the Lockwood Folly inlet. And whereas thereafter, the town manager executed various contracts and agreements with, among others, the United States Army Corps of Engineers, Dowell Corning Associates, a surveying company, outside legal counsel, and others for the purpose of applying to the Corps for Section 10 and Section 404 permits and preparing the Associated National Environmental Policy Act NEPA documentation. And whereas various public scoping meetings and inter-agency team meetings have been conducted and a draft environmental impact statement and final impact, I, excuse me, final environmental impact statement produced with the FEIS signed on March 8th, 2018, and officially noticed to the public on March 15th, 2018, thereby commencing a final 30-day comment period after which the Corps normally would draft, sign, and publicly notice its final record of decisions adopted, constituting the agency's final decision on the town's pending federal permit application. And whereas the Division Coastal Management previously informed the town that no permit applications for a terminal groin may be made to that agency until the aforementioned federal NEPA process associated with the town's pending Section 10 and Section 404 permit applications is completed. And whereas the town has noticed and conducted special and regular meetings of the Board of Commissioners, including a regular meeting held on April 6th, 2018, where the entire meeting agenda was devoted to obtaining information from a number of experts, engineers, environmental interest groups, property owner associations, property owners, and other interested members of the public. And whereas on December 19th, 2017, the town retained special outside environmental counsel to advise the board in matters regarding issues related to shoreline protection, specifically including assessment of the pending Lockwood Folly inlet terminal groin project. And whereas the federal permit process described above was commenced by the town without any meaningful cost-benefit analysis or stated plan in place for the required 30-year and longer funding of the long-term cost of the project, obtaining necessary easements or permissions from private property owners directly affected by the proposed construction of the terminal groin or funding for any of the necessary financial instruments required to maintain the terminal groin. And whereas the analysis obtained in the draft and final EIS of the positive and negative physical impacts of the terminal groin on the beachfront properties it is intended to protect on other beachfront properties and on the involved inlet are based on computer models done based upon out-of-date data and regard to more recent coastline and inlet changes, and it is not modified to consider material issues from the perspective of a local unit of government such as the town of Holden Beach or its governing Board of Commissioners, or charged by law to act only in the best interest of all of the town's citizens and residents and all guests who come to use and enjoy the town's ocean beaches and other amenities. And whereas over the past two years, the town has completed the Central Reach project to the west of the beach areas proposed to be affected by the terminal groin project. And the town has engaged in significant beach nourishment on the east end, including beach nourishment utilizing low-cost sand available as a byproduct of the continued dredging of the Lockwood Folly inlet at cost orders of magnitude lower than costs utilized by the Corps in the draft of final EIS. And whereas a number of leading coastal scientists, including Dr. Sandriggs and Dr. Lynn, yet to face the, have expressed serious concerns and opposition to the use of terminal groins generally and the proposed Lockwood Folly inlet terminal groin in particular. Whereas Professor Andrew Coburn of Western Carolina University, Associate Director of the Program for the Study and Development of Shorelines, has written the town a letter dated April 5th, 2018, in which Professor Coburn states that the town's proposed terminal groin project will not achieve any of the town's aforementioned objectives. Emphasis in original, and that it is in, and that it is his professional opinion that this project is fiscally irresponsible and a breach of fiduciary duty for the Board of Commissioners to support. And whereas each member of the Holden Beach Board of Commissioners has carefully reviewed not only the draft of final EIS, but also many hundreds of pages of relevant data, information, published articles, and other published environmental documents, including the confidential report and public notebooks prepared for each member of the board by its Special Environmental Counsel, as well as the environmental documents associated with the Ocean Isle Beach Terminal Groin Project, the Bald Head Island Terminal Groin Project, the Figure 8 Island Terminal Groin Project, and the recently published final EIS for the Bow Banks 50-Year Rinnerrishment Project in which document a terminal groin alternative was discussed in detail and rejected. And whereas during this April 6th, 2018, regular meeting devoted to review the proposed Lockwood Folly inlet terminal groin project, the Board of Commissioners was informed by officials representing the Southern Environmental Law Center and the North Carolina Coastal Federation that issuance of a pending federal permit and any subsequent issuance of a CAMO permit by BCM would result in federal and state litigation challenging such permits and associated NEPA documentation. And whereas while the Board of Commissioners does not consider the threat of such litigation as a material or substantive basis for the making of its decisions, the Board does consider such information relevant to the Board's overall duty to evaluate the costs and benefits of the proposed Lockwood Folly inlet terminal groin project. And whereas the Board of Commissioners has concluded that in carrying out its duties to equitably and fairly protect the health, safety, and welfare interests of all of its citizens, as well as the thousands of guests who come to visit the town of Holden Beach each year, the total cost to the town, its citizens and visitors of the proposed Lockwood Folly inlet terminal groin greatly outweighs the potential benefits thereto, both financially and otherwise. Now therefore be it resolved that the Holden Beach Board of Commissioners hereby revoke Resolution 11-12 Terminal Groin Permit Application. And be it further resolved that the Board of Commissioners does direct that Clark Wright, Special Environmental Counsel to the town of Holden Beach, immediately communicate with the Corps electronically, followed by the sending of a formal letter via certified mail that decision by the Board of Commissioners to withdraw fully and cease any and all further processing of or action on the town's currently pending Section 10 and Section 404 permit applications and associated NEPA documents. Core action ID number SAW-2011-01914.
Who is the maker of that document?
Clark Wright, or the environmental attorney.
Okay. Are you ready to vote?
Discussion?
Discussion.
Whatever you guys want.
I, I, I'd like to address that, repeat what I said before. And I, I plan on working with the, the town staff and the new inlet and beach protection board and continue to support the renourishment of the east end and Lockwood Folly inlet management. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Are we at number 15?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Evans.
I brought my phone and my pin in case I need to call for help. All right, we're going to talk about flood maps. And this, what this is, is this is kind of like a, this was fully and 100% plagiarized by me a couple of months ago, and they gave me the okay, and told me I could do this. I actually changed a couple of things on it because when we, me and Ron was there, they actually passed us a mentor. They had to ask me first to mentor, but I had to tell them that I was already feeding mentors by Ron, so they could ask me. So they could ask her, but anyway, they did ask, cause they had some stuff that was wrong on here, we helped correct. What we're gonna talk about really is flood maps, uh, what we gotta do and what has to be done, and why, why we have those flood, these flood maps and what the NFIP is. So the purpose of the National Flood Insurance Program or the NFIP is direct, tied directly to your flood maps. You can't have one without the other, and so it's important that we get, get information out there. So the NFIP is, is, the whole purpose of it is to identify floodplain areas and flood risk zones, to make flood insurance available and to provide framework to communities for community floodplain management ordinances. The National Flood Insurance Program or the NFIP is a voluntary program based on a mutual agreement between the federal government and the local community. In exchange for adopting, implementing, and enforcing a floodplain management ordinance, federally backed, federally backed flood insurance made available to property owners throughout the community is what you get from being in that program. Since the NFIP background, prior to the creation of the NFIP, flood insurance coverage was not available. There was no national flood mapping program. There was no federal minimum standards for floodplain management and escalating cost to taxpayers because of flood disaster relief. Uh, NFIP goals is to decrease loss of life and property, to increase the importance of hazard mitigation, restore and protect natural resources and function to floodplains, decrease taxpayers' funding, funded disaster costs, decrease insurance costs, and increase sustainability and living value. Accomplishing the NFIP goals for our new construction and substantial improvements to be flood resistant. Me and Ron are dealing with this every day, is almost a common thing for this to go on every day in our office. We assess just about every contract that comes through for construction documents to see if they fall into that category, and then we go into action to enforce. It helps keep your insurance lower, it helps us, uh, as a community to be, to, to be more sustainable and protect life and property. Guide future development away from flood hazard areas. We also use it for that, transfer flood loss costs from taxpayers to floodplain property owners. And we prohibit new development in designated floodways that would increase flood heights. Floodplain management principles, the federal government has fundamental interest in floodplain management, but the regulations are basically handed down through the state and then are actually forced by the federal government to be adopted at the local authority. Benefits to community, community participating in the NFIP, flood insurance may be sold or renewed within the community. Federal agencies are able to approve loans, grants, payments, subsidies, or rebates for acquisition of construction purchases within special flood hazard areas, including those guaranteed or administered by F A J, V A HUD, E P A, or S B A. State and federal disaster assistance will be available for damaged property, for damaged structures, so you get that assistance if you're actually in the program. Community NFIP participation. To join the NFIP, communities must admit a resolution of intent to maintain and force adequate land use and control measures and to cooperate with families. We have that on the record. We then have to adopt a flood damage prevention ordinance, and then we have to have NFIP application. Okay? The new NFIP flood insurance policies or renewals, and these are the sanctions if you don't get what we have to do done and if you don't join the program. No federal grants or loans for development in special flood hazard areas under federal programs. No state or federal disaster assistance to communities or to repair insurable buildings located in special flood hazard areas. No federal mortgage insurance or loan guarantees in special flood hazard areas. Federally insured or regulated lenders must notify applicant-seeking loans in special flood, flood hazard areas that there is a flood hazard and the property is not eligible for the, for federal disaster relief. You can only imagine what that would lead to your county. Liability of flood losses within the FEMA published, fixed flood areas, falls to the respective community. Effective date of firms, that means we'd have to pick up all, if we had a disaster, we'd have to pick it all up. Effective date of firms, okay? This is our magic number, the date, this date will be established by FEMA and once submitted appeals and protests are evaluated and have been resolved by the effective date. FEMA has set this date to be August twenty eighth, twenty eighteen. They have resolved all of their, their appeals. We had two, I think, and they got resolved. We actually had a, they agreed with our, their, their data did not match what was actually on the ground. And we, the Board had approved for me to appeal on behalf of property owners. We had some appeals and they moved a line C word back to where it was originally. They had moved it up in fewer properties. And we, we gotta move it back out. But I think it was one of, wasn't it one of yours that was one year ago? Okay. All right. All right, this is the communities that are in the NFIP status. If you, I, I wanna take notice, I'm gonna take my own horn here, Carolina Shores, you see where it says one twenty-six nineteen ninety-nine? That was the same year as Hurricane Floyd, we called it Hurricane Flood. I was actually working for Cali, for, for Calabash and I was contracted to do Carolina Shores work. I helped implement that flood ordinance right there because they had a bunch of properties that went underwater. I know we've been here a long time, but I have a story I have to tell you. All along seventeen, it went underwater, houses went underwater, they didn't have insurance, they weren't part of the NFIP. FEMA came down and after these people had been working in their homes, they got disflooded with water, been working for months and stuff was piled all in the street, and we were doing everything we could to help them in the community. They came down, came to my office and told me that they were there to help. We hadn't seen any assistance up to that point. And it was two people. And I said, well, how are you gonna help? They were there for psychological support. How dangerous it would be if they went out in that community and they were gonna need probably some protection. They literally came back to my office, had a discussion, and left. I saw one of the ladies about six months later and she told me I was correct. Yeah, that didn't fly. Okay. Yeah, I want you to notice that the free board over here, the free board is in direct proportion with what your insurance rates are gonna be. Three or four years ago, ours was at zero. We now have, let's see. It's, uh, it's two point five. We're the only ones that have that. What it amounts to is, is that everyone gets a three foot, if you're in an AE on Holden Beach, you don't have to, you don't have to abide by two point five, but you get a three foot, three foot credit because of the way we did ours. But anyway, that's a good number, we're gonna, we're gonna give some CRS points for that.
Excuse me, so two and a, two and a half is better than two, is your point?
Yeah, we, that's, that's how much higher you have to go. And what we did was, for simplification, when we redid, we had a committee that got together and we redid the way we measure height. When we remeasured the height, we, we did make notice designation between AE and VE. We carried in all, all the lowest horizontal structural members to the bottom plus two feet, which was the design flood elevation. By doing so, everything in the AE gets measured to the top floor, so they immediately went to three feet.
Okay, great. The other interesting part about this is us in Sunset Beach nineteen seventy-two, so pretty impressive.
Yeah, there's like three, you'll notice the coastal communities were very early because there was a mandate back then that, that we'd be, that you'd be a part. And it was also coordinated, it came along at the same time as about the CAMO. Yeah, all of it, there was a lot of awareness back then. All right, effective date of firms, changes on new flood maps or zone boundaries and base flood elevations will not affect flood insurance policies until the effective date. Remember our effective date is August twenty eighth. If we pull off what we had to pull off, that means that there can't be a whole lot of discussion about this. Insurance fact sheets available on NFIP or on our share point, that share point is basically only available in floodplain management. So not gonna get too much into that. Mandatory updates, says all NFIP communities must update their flood damage prevention orders before the end of the six months. Our, our six month ending point is August twenty eighth. So we've got to amend our floodplain ordinance, we have to put that new effective date in there and any of their new changes that they may have. So that ordinance will be coming to y'all. Uh, it is a model ordinance. It will mirror what we have with a few changes that they have to go in there, but those changes are required. So now there are some changes that can be made in the future. I'm not recommending that we do anything to make ours any stricter than it already is. We can look at those for the future, we need to get these adopted. All right, NFIP Regulation Section forty-four, the Code of Federal Regulations is the NFIP Bible. Now our section forty-four is not in ordinance format, so they have a model ordinance that they've prepared for us. We, we use it already, it's the same one. All right. And then, let's see. We have to submit one signed and sealed copy, and if possible, one electronic copy to the state of North Carolina following address upon adoption, and the state will forward one copy to FEMA and Region Four. Our timeline is this, is that we hope to fulfill all of the requirements under this ordinance adoption procedure. Can you read it, Ms. Attorney?
That?
Yeah. Anyway, we, we, what we've gotta do is we're gonna try to do that by the May meet. Okay? If we can't pull it off, it'll be June. But it is our understanding that, that, that we can adopt the date. We have to send out some property owner notifications to everyone that we're doing the new adoption. Then we have to, we have to publish it as an adopted ordinance change.
Two, it's a two week, uh, publication business.
Right, that's right. So if we can send out those, those letters and we can get it in two weeks, you know, maybe get it before y'all and get y'all adopted, then we will be ahead of the schedule and we can get it off to them for approval. I would not recommend dilly-dallying around with them. I was working with Leland when they dilly-dallyed around with the two thousand and six one, and we ended up with a mess in the office because there was a lapse. Now, this is the million dollar question that we always get. I don't see anybody in here who hasn't asked this million dollar question, but we get this every day. We, you can start using the maps once we adopt the ordinance. But you do not, goes back to that slide before, you cannot get a reduction in the insurance until the effective date. You're still on the old. So our recommendation is, is that if you're not going to CO whatever you're starting until after the effective date, then it's probably gonna benefit you on some of these fourteen hundred square foot properties to wait until we adopt it, use it, but if you, and then not CO until that date. We're falling in a pretty good timeline, cause that's about how long it takes to build a new house or new construction. So if you've got any substantial improvements, we have a lot, I think Mr. Lewis went through some of this, but we kinda helped him out, I believe. But we have a lot of substantial improvements right now that people can't do because they would have to raise their improvements two feet above or four feet or five feet above where their floor is now. Well, some of these properties are coming down. So people will be able to do remodeling, repair that they couldn't do in the past because now the BF field, the DFE is being lowered, and so they can actually do these, these, these improvements. And substantial improvement, if you're one of those areas, you can now substantially improve without having to raise the whole structure. Most will cost effective. So if, if, I know the contractor's not in here, but we give this information out and they'll be aware of it. It was also given out the contractor's information. Okay. Now I was asked to do a tutorial on how to use the website. And if, if anybody's familiar with government, you know the higher up the ladder you get, the worse everything is.
The less capable you are.
That's right. Okay.
That's why you're driving.
So if you go to the town's website, you'll, you'll, you'll see this on the very first page, it is the actual link to get to the North Carolina flood maps. If you click on that flood map, you then will go down and click on Brunswick County, if you see what I'm doing there.
Yep.
All right, this is where it gets interesting, people wanna go too deep and they don't have to. And so they can't get to where they wanna go. But if you look right in that first page, once you click off that box, you'll see where it says for address, city, or zip. So you simply enter the address. And then you hit go. And what it does is it pulls up the map with that location. And if you, if you look, it has a little, little, little arrow there that shows you where you're at. And if you see, it gives you the effective date. That is what's in place now, right now. So if you wanna see what's on the preliminary, you gotta remember where you're at on the map, and then you go up here and you switch to preliminary. And then you re-click on it. And then you go down to flood insurance information and you can see how that one changed. Does anybody see how it changed? That's how you use the website. Okay? So it's, the key to using this website is not to go too deep. On the very first page, enter your address there, and then it's easy to navigate to see where you're at. But you have to also remember where your house is at when it pops up, cause sometimes it moves a little bit. But if we, if we go to the one that's next to it, that is the preliminary. You see that? That's in an AE. If we go to the effective, do you hear that? Click on it. And there's where it was. So that went from an AE, went, went to an AE eleven when it was a VE seventeen. Does everybody understand how that works? So that's your tutorial for them. Anybody got any questions? Oh, VE. Well, VE, VE, anytime you see a V, that's wave action, anytime, with, with wave actions larger than three feet, A zones, i- is just flood, just regular flood.
So A is better than D?
Yes.
A is much better than V.
So have you studied across the island to see if it's improving across the island?
Supposedly from the information we got originally, we have some fourteen hundred properties that's supposed to be getting better. But we got some that's getting worse, so you'll have to go check for yourself. But yeah.
With this process, will that have any effect on our CRS rating?
Well, the, we're gonna get, we, they've never picked up our two and a half feet, that'll have some impact on it. There are some new CRS points that we, we can, that can be gotten. Um, we have, I put money into education budget so that we could go out and explore other communities to see how they got, see what they did. Um, there is no, we've tried, there's no one who can come and sit down and work with you on those things. North Carolina Department of Public Safety's trying to develop that, it's what we were asked to help with. Um, but, uh, there are some other things that we can do to reduce our CRS. But we have to be proactive in, in getting that done, and it'll require some action on y'all's part. We started this process years ago, we've been creeping into it, but we gotta be careful. Some of those things that CRS wants you to do are so cost effective to the property owners until they don't weigh out. So it needs, the challenge really needs to be, we know what those are. So you have to ask yourself, as a community, are you gonna try to get cheaper insurance? Or are you gonna make it more costly to build to where you never see anything from, back from that? So there's a balance.
Just, just to get the benefit of the two and a half foot feet, do we have to jump through a lot of hoops or that'll always be?
No, 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 they'll, they'll pick that right up, that is, that is, it is a, they, they come and score us based on everything we do. We know that that's a problem, we also gonna get some points because we actually, four, three years ago, I worked with the county and we went in, we, we actually, our hazard mitigation plan became much stronger because we, we actually are in our original plan now, we're not by ourselves.
But it sounds like you're, you're gonna focus on that and evaluate how, how?
My, my intentions are to, to lead you down the path of less getting, because we have so many properties that are getting better on their own, because they're going into different, better, easier, lower rate zones, and the, there's a lot of properties who at this time are not, are not benefiting from a two and a half, three foot designed flood elevation because they weren't built to that, they were built right on zero. Well, when these maps drop the number down, they're gonna benefit from that as well. So there's gonna be some benefits across the board without changing any CRS ratings. And it's important that we get to these first, these are, this is the low hanging fruit, I guess is the best way to say it. Yeah. Any more questions?
Nice, nice chance.
Yep, very good, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Evans.
Am I next? Am I next, really?
Hmm, no.
Think somebody else is in between me.
I think it's.
I don't know, I'm.
I might be the last.
I'm looking number sixteen, is that right?
Yeah.
Is that you, Mr. Butler?
Yes, sir. Number, number sixteen. As, uh, first of all, I'd like to once again thank, thank Tim and Chris. As, first of all, I'd like to once again thank, thank Tim and Chris and Rhonda as well, and the Citizens Advisory Committee. And, because they did a great, great job in working along with us on, on this, and the work that they did, and the hours that they spent on this as well. But as was recommended in our last meeting, today's agenda, item number sixteen, parking, again describes, there's a list of exactly what the items are, the recommendations as far as parking. And also on page sixty-three and sixty-four, you have a list, but I have to say one thing, on page, on number four, on page sixty-three, that we talk about the post height being three feet. And it was a resident that brought that to my attention. You talk three feet there, but yet in your agenda, item number sixteen, you talk about two feet. But as Tim reminded me again today, that last month we discussed this, three feet to two feet and everything, and it was decided that two feet would be better all around. So that's why the ordinance reflects two, two feet. So I didn't want to confuse anybody, but being that somebody brought that to my attention, right, I wanted to discuss that. Okay? This also includes the amended ordinances included on page sixty-five and sixty-eight of the agenda package. The ordinance numbers are eighteen dash oh seven and eighteen dash oh eight. Because we've discussed this, and it's completely outlined and been presented to the public, I would like to make a motion that these items be accepted, and to include the ordinance amendments and so forth, recommend we go forward.
A second?
I have a motion, a second discussion.
Yes, I, I have a little discussion.
All right, so you got the floor.
Okay. Council, in order for this ordinance to be effective, the first one, eighteen dash oh seven, well, we have to modify all the parking signs so that people have the knowledge that they can no longer park between the hours of two to five AM, so, how, how will they know that?
The ordinance, the law, the tail end of the ordinance, so they're part of the responsibility.
Can you people in the back here?
They're in the law for anymore.
Really?
Unless, the, the signs say you can park here twenty-four hours, and certainly you should, but otherwise, the signs don't need to be created in order to advise people that they can't park.
So, so then why do we have the signs that say no parking from here to the corner? If, if we just put that in this ordinance, we wouldn't have to put the signs there at all?
Yes.
Where I come from, if you don't post it, you can't give a summons out. You can't enforce it if people don't know it.
It, it, the ordinance is the ordinance, so people that are, I mean, certainly if made public, operating with the public, public knowledge, get, providing information to the public that visit you, you could, but if somebody violates the tail end ordinance, ignorance of the law is no excuse. I think probably everybody has heard that before.
Well, I, I, I agree with that, but there's, there's a due process question that I, that I am concerned with, because, like I say, if somebody comes over the island and just parks his car, as David had had a question about to go fishing, that they've done it for the last ten years, there's, there's not even a, a warning, he has no idea that he's not allowed to do that. And, and again, I'm only saying, I come from New York, and you could not issue a summons, that sign had to be clear. And so I was thinking that we would have to change all those signs to say no parking from here twenty-five feet, and no parking between two and five o'clock, and you're saying that's not necessary?
I do not believe that's necessary.
Okay.
If, if I determine that it is necessary, I will advise the board immediately, but I do not believe that's necessary.
Okay. And the other question, question I have here is, it seems to me that we had discussed the question about the, the, the distance from the sidewalk to make sure the cars couldn't park anyway, right? Instead of the old ten feet, we've, we've made it twenty-four inches from grade. But in addition to mailboxes, newspaper boxes, do you want to allow plantings in that area, or are the plantings still going to have to be ten feet from the?
I think it allows vegetation now up to a certain height inside of that.
It, it does allow it, but if, if you look at it, the, the way I look at this, and I'm going to have to look.
Next line.
Yeah, it says the area right away, ten feet of the pavement, may be landscaped, right? So now you have ten feet from this, from the street can be landscaped, but two feet, you can put your mailbox. The way I look at that, you can't put, if you don't want to put up a rope fence, this way, one of the only things you can do is, is put up that rope fence, right? So if you decide you want to put plantings two feet high rather than the rope fence, you can't put it in the same area. Am I wrong?
That's right. What this says is, is that the ten feet of right away that's nearest to the pavement of the road bed shall remain clear of all items with the following exceptions. A two-foot post and rope, that, that's mailbox, newspaper boxes, and we're adding the text, post and rope not to exceed twenty-four inches in grade. It, it, another exception is grass and approved previous products or vegetation not to exceed one foot in height. And the property, and then it goes on to designate those properties down there, eleven eighty-nine, eleven ninety, it's already being allowed to, to do something in this order. But then at C, it says the area right away beyond the ten feet of pavement may be landscaped by the abutting property owner provided of the zoning code is complied with, and shall be clear of all other manmade structures not used in landscaping with the exceptions, exception of fences. So I don't think the two are in conflict.
Okay. I agree. I, I misread that.
Any more discussion?
You ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
I just, I, I'm sorry, I just, I was the one who had last time said I wanted us to vote on each individual item, but having seen the way that it's described here on the, on Heather's memo dated April ninth, where she's explained one through nine, I waive that I want to vote on each individual one, and we can just vote on them together.
Great.
Just for clarification against last time's minute, or the time before last minutes.
Can I interject just for a second? Okay, our other page over there has those things that y'all wanted us to do, and this is part of those things, so we're implementing those, that process that we all wanted to go through. One of them was maps, the maps that would go to DOT in the encroachment agreement that we signed. I gave y'all copies, there was some copies on the back. And what, what, what we have on these maps is, what I did was try to narrow it down to exactly where we would have to have signs that would have to pre-prove by, be approved by DOT. Now, for clarification, when you look at the maps, we can have lots of signs that's in our right of way. So these maps only have the signs that we would need approval from DOT to put in place. The first map has the sign that, that, that the committee talked about on numerous occasions, which is the sign down here at the bottom of the bridge, that would have a directional arrow for each way stating parking. That's on the first page. Okay? The next page says no overnight parking, and that is in front of one of those reserved areas that we talked about. We don't have to put that in now, but we can put it in later, but we have those two areas down there where we can have future parking. Both of those are designated as no overnight parking, because the actual parking signs for those areas can go in our right of way, but we need no parking overnight for those areas because of the people living next to it in the DOT right of way on the other side. So I've designated those two spots on the map. And then, if you go a little bit further down, you'll see where it said, there's a, a marker at eleven fifty-four six. We included this because of a safety issue with the gate down there, and a traffic issue. Everybody remembers that we had people who have, were having a lot of traffic down there, so I took the opportunity, why not take the opportunity, we're talking with Pat and everyone down there. So we have two locations down there, one at eleven seventy-four for an informational sign, and I think that Point West is getting that information together, I believe, for that sign. But we only need to tell them it's going to be the informational sign, then we can put what we want to on it. And of course, the other one is another gate ahead sign, to give people more notice that it might be time to turn around down there. It's so funny that that ordinance we were just reading actually has a provision to try to help some of this from back in nineteen eighty-nine, so maybe this will be another, you know, reaction to try to limit some of that as well. So, so there is another designation at eleven ninety-two, in case we need one there as well. So every, all the other areas that we looked at, we have right of way where we can choose where to put the signs. This is only the map for y'all to approve, either me or David to sign the encroachment agreement, if DOT approves the map. So that's what this map is. And that goes with the parking ordinance, because it's part of that series of stuff that you asked, you tasked us to do.
So it's included in what has already been?
Right, it's in that tasker that's in the beginning there, yeah.
Good.
Ready to vote?
Would like to make a comment.
In the, I, I think it was maybe the original tasker, the term was used prior to summer season, beach season. Just want to make sure that, to make the board cognizant of the fact that this still has to be okayed by DOT, and we don't control their timeline. We will, we will amble that way, but, you know, they're, they're the ones that are going to determine how quickly we're able to get approval to put some of the elements out.
Good, but Tim, Tim has been very good in keeping me on the loop when he sees, sees me on that, and I appreciate that. We're moving forward.
Any more discussion? Ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. So we're guessing on number seventeen, Mr. Fletcher.
Seventeen, it's, that time of year, I move, moved that the board approve the, the town clerk to direct solicitation for an external audit for the twenty eighteen audit.
Second. Mr. Freer, was that you?
Yes, sir.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say no. Again, it's unanimous, number eighteen.
Eighteen, B, we talked before about the need for an internal control assessment to be done. I've contacted the LGC, they will approve the contract if, if, if we write a contract. I moved that the board directs solicitation of an accounting firm to conduct the comprehensive financial accounting internal control review for the town.
That's a motion.
Yes, sir.
Your second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. It's unanimous, Madam Clerk. Number nineteen, Madam Clerk.
Oh, I think on that one, we're going to wait till David or one of us solicits more availability from you guys, and we'll come back to you on that date.
Everybody in agreement on that?
Yes, sir.
Number twenty, request to sell, uh, drink, uh, sell.
You need one?
If, if we hear another couple hours, we're going to change that to drink beer. Request to sell beer at Holden Beach Festivals. Mark?
My name is Mark Pompey, I live at one sixty-six one, Chicago East. So my objective was to be able to sell beer at festivals, and all the other towns around here do it. And I have a lot of friends that, that are like coming to Holden Beach Festivals because we don't sell any beer here. So I'm just going to tell you a little story about what I found out here is, so a month ago, I talked to a couple of town council members, and they're like, oh yeah, we're in favor of that, we're going to go for that. All right, so I put a ton of time into this, called the beer distributors, getting licenses, and all that kind of stuff, and I go meet with one of their town members about how, how do I get this proposed to this, and within a half an hour of me sending this thing, what everybody told me, oh yeah, we're in favor of it, they've all basically changed their mind. So they started to look at me in the face and lied to me when they had no intention of doing this in the first place, which really upsets me. All right. I mean, I guess my time's free, right? So I'm still going to pursue it, because I really want an explanation why. You can tell me to my face, but you can't, but as soon as I turn my back, you change your mind. So then last week, I got a, I got a call from a gentleman in the back row over here, he's in charge of the festivals, I guess, and he calls me and tells me that he wants to help me with this, he thinks it's a great idea. So I met him for lunch today, and what he needs me to do is, he wants me to get this passed, because he has no intentions of ever letting me do it, because he wants the money. So I'm supposed to be up here to take care of his business for him. So the only thing I would tell you is, do it yourself. I withdraw. I don't want to sell the beer.
All ready? Town manager report.
Yes, sir. Unbeknownst to me, there, wanted to make everybody aware that the Tri Beach Fire Department is, looks like to me, having a birthday party at the pavilion, fiftieth anniversary celebration on Saturday the twenty-first from one to four o'clock, and they'll be having a lot of stuff, children, equipment, historic department documents, that type of thing. So I'm sure we've got several of these flyers, and, you know, they're a big part of the, big part of the community. We had over a thousand participants in the search five K race this past Saturday, of which seven hundred and seventy were Brunswick County kids K through twelve. That's a lot of kids, and it's a bit, it has really become a big event here at Holden Beach, partnering with the school system here in the county. I know everyone has been dreading hearing that DOT is going to be fixing the bridge in the summertime, but it looks like there will be repairs underway on the Holden Beach Bridge, beginning sometime in August or September. First of all, the correspondence from DOT says that there is no imminent danger or concern with the bridge that they're aware of, but they're going to be fixing the overlay on the, the travel surface of the bridge, doing some repairs to the concrete girders and beam supports along with the foundation, and then also some of the fender system replacement in the waterway. We'll have some more information as that evolves, but it looks like they'll do lane closures at night, one on, one off, and potentially some off-peak lane closures in the off-season. This looks like it's going to be after, after Labor Day type work. Speaking of the bridge, want to make sure that everyone is aware that the decals to gain re-entry to the island after a major storm event, a hurricane, have been sent out in last month's water bill. Extras, you can get extras, those are for sale at the front window here, but I would like to stress that you can't get back on the island without those decals. So please take the time to look for the ones that you've already received, make sure that you've located, and, and go ahead and put them wherever you need to put them, whether it's with your plan, your stuff, your go-bag, in your wallet, on your windshield, just make sure that you've taken the time to secure those decals for storm. Our water tower, we finished the paint job on it, and our major line up fittings, so now we're going to transition over to moving the cell, cell. So now we're going to transition over to moving the cell, uh, cell antennas over to the, the tiara that's on top of the water tower itself. Some of you may have seen Brunswick Electric crews on island. There's a major replacement of the streetlights underway. Those, that streetlight replacement project has completed basically the east end of the beach. And they've gone to the west end and are working their way back to the bridge. Once they fi- finish the main drag from end to end, then they'll start on the side streets. With the intent of having all of those replacement lights accomplished before Memorial Day. Over on Ranger Street, there's a new parking scheme over there for mirror imaging, the golf cart buggy, personal bikes and strollers. Uh, that's in place on Elizabeth Street. So those two streets now are really the, established as the personal golf cart bicycle kind of places for beach access. Lockwood Falls Inlet, um, I don't know what it's like out there today after the, the storm or the blow that we've had the last couple of days. The channel was open back in February, we, we weren't able to put any navigation buoys out. Evidently, none exist, except for the one that had sat off of here from Matthew in front of Irving Woods' house for about a year until it broke loose last summer. But anyway, um, that may not be needed, marking the channel may not be needed after the, after the recent blow. But the short story on that is that the hopper dredge put the nearshore disposal material from the inlet in the area between Blockade Runner and the east end back to the east. And it also included some sand from the Shalote Inlet Crossing area there. I don't know how many loads, evidently the word we're getting is that they don't know how many loads retract either. In the past, we've, we've actually included that in our annual beach monitoring, but I haven't been able to ascertain a, a drop count from the core yet. Beach grass planting will take place after Memorial Day from 800 to 1,000 Ocean Boulevard West. That, the weather and the hot houses will all coincide and we want to make sure that we were able to get that work done at the start of the, the new hot season. To our FEMA and Matthew storm damage repair efforts, we have requested our final inspections, but haven't received confirmation of when those actual final inspections will take place. So we believe that we've finished all the work, we believe that we've qualified for the sum total of the, the, the truncation of the project. But that will be, that will be FEMA making the determination when they're actually going to come down and eyeball it for our final stamp of approval on our projects. And lastly, to canal dredging, as many of you know, the sub, canal subdivisions, we're programming a full dredge of all of the canal subdivisions this coming winter. That would be November of 18 through March of 19. Approximately 55,000 cubic yards will be removed from the 25,000 linear feet of canals. Total estimated cost is $2.2 million with a full two-thirds of that paid for on a reimbursement basis from a Division of Water, Water Resources grant. The point, not only the money, but one of the things I'd like to stress for the folks in the audience, if you're a canal subdivision resident, now's the time to make, um, to, to put eyeballs on just what your bulkhead looks like. So that you can get your, any repairs that you need done, taken care of before the project starts. Because what's going to happen is that Mr. Evans is going to go out there in a couple of months prior to the project and make sure that any deficiencies are recorded for posterity. So that whenever the dredge does come through, that there won't be any y'all broke my bulkhead kind of claims. So it, it's best to go ahead and take care of your own business before we're documenting it for another purpose. In sync with the fact that whenever these bulkheads are going to need to be repaired, it's just going to make a better project out there whenever we dredge those canals. There's not a lot of bulkhead contractors out there and you're going to run into a supply and demand issue whenever you need to get your bulkheads repaired in anticipation of, of an upcoming dredge. Because there's not a lot of folks out there. Additionally, and finally, in closing, whenever we get closer to the November through March dredge, we, we have a better project done if folks will move their floating docks when possible. Some docks can just be loosened from one pile and then swung away out of the way of the dredge. It gets really tight in those locations when the dredge is trying to swing back and forth and get his cutter head suction line up close to the docks. If he's got a little bit more room, you know, if you got a, if you got a dock that's, floating dock that's eight feet wide, you've taken off 16 feet if you got a dock on each side. That, that really helps the dredge be able to finesse his way down the canal. So like to stress for folks, take a look at it and if you can, now's the time to do it. Because he can get, he can get a better product near your dock. You know, we're restricted to a certain template, but it, it just makes for a better cut. Plus, you're going to probably need to move your boats also, for those of you that keep your boats in the water during that time. The, the dry marinas are going to fill up, now's the time to be thinking about what you're going to do with your boat during that timeframe. And that's all my remarks for tonight, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Mayor's comments are brief. I sent, I believe I sent all of your commissioners a, an email in regards to a turtle monument. I noticed it was not put on the agenda. Did you want me to communicate to the person, thank you but no thank you, or what, what do you want to do?
I've, I've already talked to him as well and, and I've talked to the Town Manager and I think maybe the, I don't know if it's the Beautification Club? Thinking about putting it at the entranceway.
I, I have spoken with the Beautification Club.
I think somebody had talked about maybe putting it at the base of the bridge. So it wouldn't have kids playing on it if we put it out here in the park or something like that. Just to get away so it wouldn't be hazardous like that. But I think it's a beautiful statue, he's a, it's going to cost a fortune, it's life size, it'd be four, probably four feet tall, bronze. And they've got, what, 40 years experience of coming here. So I'd, I'd say we try to do that in a nice place. If we don't do it someplace, they're going to put it in one of their yards.
Okay, the only thing I'd request, whenever the mayor sends you information in regards to communication from the public, please let me know whenever action or follow-up is done by individuals so I don't get embarrassed.
Well, I didn't get a message from you, sir, I got a call from him.
Okay, so my message?
I'm sorry, I didn't get your message, I'm sorry.
Did you guys get a call?
I, I, I got your message.
I got it.
Alright, alright, you handle it then, alright. You're, you got the floor?
Why don't we decide what we're going to do about the, the offer of the gift rather than just letting it dangle there?
Well, I was trying to get, I thought it would go on the agenda, but that didn't work, so I don't know. Whatever you guys want to do, but I'm through with my report.
Okay. Then, then I would move that we put that on the next agenda and we speak about it. And I can, I can see why it was left off since we had 25 items on this agenda, so.
I think it was just an omission. Right, yep, okay, I, I think we should put on next agenda as well. Madam Clerk, did you catch that? Thank you.
Me through?
No, I didn't start. We, we were still working on your, your comment.
But anyway, who's on first and who's on second?
You tell us.
Alright, are we still talking about the turtle?
No.
Are we done with the turtle?
Done with the turtle.
Now, sir, would you talk about whatever you want to talk about?
I certainly will. I, again, I don't want to preach to the choir, but we're in the process of getting the budget together. And there are a couple of issues that, as you can tell, the five of us don't always agree on everything. And there are some issues that are in the budget where we certainly have, have differences of opinion. And I think it would behoove everyone who's here to not only come here again to listen to the budget discussion, but to ask other people who, Ronnie Allen, to come here and listen to the budget discussion. Because it, it's going to affect a lot of what happens next year and in, into the future. So it would be beneficial, again, to have more input from the community as well as the community understanding the thought process that goes on and where we're going to allocate money and why we're going to allocate it in, in those specific places. Secondly, I guess I would, I would like to say that, I guess since I've sat here, I've been told at least three or four times that I either did or didn't do anything, something, but nobody ever mentioned me by name, they just mentioned us as a group. I'll let you know that I've never spoken to Mr. Pompey. If he didn't get up there tonight, I wouldn't know who he was. Secondly, Mr. McIntyre, I sat in the meetings that you had with Parks and Recreation. I remember you asking me if I had anything to say. I do not remember you asking me if I was going to comment on the proposed ordinance starting the shoreline protection. And I will tell you, I guess I should have said it before, I go to as many meetings as I can because I like to know what's going on. Sometimes when the advisory committees come to see us, they don't give us all the information. So if I sit there and I hear something that may not be brought to our attention, I, I feel better about that. But I will never speak at one of those because those are your meetings and I don't want to influence how you think by telling you whether I agree with your position or disagree with your position or suggest something that you should maybe put in the report that you're going to leave out. That's entirely up to you. So I'll, I'll be there, but I'll never say anything at any of those meetings. Thank you.
SPAM?
I wanted to give special thanks to the town staff who, based on a sort of recommendation I made a couple of months ago about trying to improve the information that we give to renters, have actually created a very nice page on the website that sort of pulls together all of the things that we, we try to tell people about, you know, use 911, grill ordinance, you know, the beach ordinances and everything. You can only get so much on the flashing sign as people come over the bridge. So this is a, a complete page and it actually is renters' information. So I really do want to thank the staff for coming up with this really nice information page as quickly as they did so it's ready for season.
Want me to go? I don't know. Um, I'd also like to just, just piggyback on Mike a little bit here about Mr. Pompey. He, uh, he did approach, and I'm going to say he approached me, and it was about beer being given out after a race for free. And, uh, I don't know about you, but if I ran a 5K race, I'd certainly enjoy a beer, might bring my own and that. But that's what the discussion was about, it had nothing to do with the beer sales. However, he did mention to me about the possibility of beer sales. And I told him that that was totally out of, out of order, wasn't even remotely about our discussion at all. So, but I'm, I'm going to move on from that. I'd like to also thank those folks that were here this evening, along with those folks that attended previous meetings pertaining to the terminal groin. There was a lot of, a lot of information, a lot of research and that, and I certainly appreciate, you know, some of the discussions that you folks had with me pers- personally on, on this sub-subject. And that, and I got to say, Christie, Parks and Rec, and, uh, you know, the Easter egg hunt, my grandkids really enjoyed it. And I enjoyed the faces just watching all these kids running around here. We had, we had so many kids in this room, you couldn't even count them. And that, but there were a lot, a lot of kids, but you're good, you know, everybody did a great job. And I want to say the town support too. When you come and you can see people that aren't even on that committee, didn't have to be here, but they were here and that, which was really, really great. They took it upon themselves and they put their own time into it, so thanks again for that.
Mr. Fletcher?
Pardon me?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to get a hug, I'm sorry.
I, I, I'll get off, okay. Peter?
Come on, you can't take my spot.
Mr. Fletcher's next in line.
Whoever.
Well, thank you everybody for coming. We've labored hard and I hope that you appreciate that the, you have a board that's spent an awful lot of time researching the groin project question. And I think everybody made the decision based on what they think is best for the town individually. And I drew away the conclusion that the, a better option than putting a groin in was to continue nourishing but putting sand on the beach for the half-mile section and keeping the entire beach healthy. My view is, that's our biggest thing coming, is keep the nine miles of beach beautiful so people love it, can use it, keep coming here, keep renting, and we that live here get to enjoy it. So just appreciate that, that everybody on this board spent an awful lot of time researching and reaching down as deep as they could to come up with the right decision. And they made the decision tonight, so we appreciate you bearing with us for that. And thank you for coming tonight and spending as much time as you have.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher.
I'll, I'll ditto Mr. Fletcher's comments. And also, a lot of work went into everything we did tonight from the staff as well. So I'd like to thank them as well and, and everybody for attending, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, number 24, public comments on anything you want to talk about.
I'm Dolly Mitchell, 132 Tarpon Drive. I know you're getting ready to work on budget. And if I don't say this now, I don't have the opportunity to say it at the budget meetings, I could talk to you individually. I was appalled yesterday morning when I left home driving this direction on Ocean Boulevard with the effects of the storm and the number of, you know, people had rolled their trash cans out. There was trash everywhere, there were cans overturned. I'd rather see us spend money on working out trash solutions as to paying high-priced lawyers when we have a good lawyer here sitting. So just take that into consideration as you plan. I'd even would be willing to pay more for trash pickup to avoid what I saw yesterday morning.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Young?
I'll be brief, I know we wanted to humiliate the rest of us. Sheila Young, 193 Brunswick Avenue West. My house is for sale if anybody's interested. I'm also in the low flood insurance area, so that's a good thing. Uh, just a couple of comments. The other evening when, when there was the special, the meeting earlier in the month, when there were all the reports on the terminal groin. I didn't understand why Dial-Cordy was on the agenda, but there was no report, there was no written report given to anybody. I don't know if you can answer that, I'm not expecting an answer now, but I, I thought that Dial-Cordy was being our town advocate for gathering information and I thought we were paying for that service with our tax money. So I just didn't understand why they weren't, somebody wasn't here to represent them. The other subject is the Parks and Rec Board and your new board. I would just like to say, I think a few meetings ago, when Karen Fleischauer, who was the Chair of Parks and Rec, who was one, was one of the speakers tonight, and I... I appreciate all of the speakers, what they had to say, they did a good job trying to clarify what their role was. As I say, a few meetings ago, Karen and I both spoke, and I think maybe we didn't make our points strong enough, or, I'm not saying you didn't make the right decision, but I think there maybe is some misunderstanding about the fact that we had a shoreline protection committee to start with. Karen was on that, I was on it. When we got a Parks and Rec Director, which we didn't have at the time, then the board decided to do away with the shoreline protection committee and instead roll it into a Parks and Rec Board. Before that, we really didn't have any recreation to deal with, we didn't have the park across the street, or all the grants we got since then. So, I, I would like to have seen you, and I'm only saying this as, as having been the Shoreline Protection Chair, I would like to have seen you give the Parks and Rec Board a chance, give them some direction, because some of those people, I know Karen is one of them, that really went on that board because she had such an interest on the beach things. And I think if they were given a chance, then maybe they could be doing what you're asking this other committee to do. Just quickly, we also removed people from boards that were not residents, and I notice you have an ability to be on this new committee, even if you're not a permanent resident. I, I would suggest you look into what our rules have been, I'm not sure what they are. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wanna speak to any topic, on the agenda or not? Anyone?
Will we adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn, for a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for all...